To call the regularly scheduled board of selection meeting for Monday, March 21st, 2022 to order as per allowance under executive orders and legislative actions. This meeting is being conducted in some hybrid Zoom fashion. Charles, would you please, as you traditionally do, lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two, public hearings received comment on an ordinance amending the boundaries of Guilford's voting districts. It is my understanding that this has been precipitated by a change in the state legislative districts, most importantly District Four, otherwise known as the North Guilford or Melissa Jones Elementary School. And I think we have the registrars or at least one of them on here. Gloria or Lisa or both, are you?
We're here at the office, yes.
Okay, would you just, for the, for those who are unfamiliar with what's going on, could you just give us a little background on why and what we're doing?
Because of the census that was taken and the state redistricts some areas. So District Four, which is North Guilford, some of that area went below Route 80, but effective since of January, the border for Route 80 is centerline through, I'm sorry, the border for District Four is centerline through Route 80. So we had to adjust those people below and move them to another district in the lower half of Guilford.
Good, thank you, Gloria. Now, we've had some discussions about this before. At this point, we are not going to try to do the rebalancing that we had talked about relative to the firehouse voting district being the largest and also one of the most difficult to get into and out of because of its location on 77. So we're, we've put that on hold at this point, correct?
We're just going along with the mandated state guidelines, redistrict.
Okay, so and then the next item that I just want to cover, we're going to make this effective, I believe, is it May 1st?
I think it's May, the middle of May or May 11th.
Okay, so this will not be in effect for the referendum vote in April, correct?
Correct, everyone should go to their regular polling place to vote and all polling places will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the budget referendum.
Wonderful. And then the, so the first anticipated vote, unless the budget referendum goes down, would be any primaries this summer, any, for the major political parties?
Yes, primaries are scheduled, if they are scheduled, they would be in about early August.
Okay, and then next, what's our process for alerting the voters to the fact that their, their polling places are going to change?
We, of course, social media everywhere we can, but each person who will have a change will be receiving a postcard or other mailings. Just Lisa and I will begin to do that as soon as we can. After the referendum.
Thank you, anybody have any questions?
No.
Pretty straightforward. Any comments from the public or questions?
The referendum.
Name, name.
Julie Schlesel.
I'm sorry, just.
To my address?
Yes.
177 Stepstone Hill Road.
Thanks, Julie.
Just on the referendum, if we, if something else is included in it, does the postcard go to everyone if it's not just about the voting district?
The only thing that will be on the referendum are related to Guilford's budget and/or capital projects. And that, so that's not going to change anything relative to this process.
Okay. I mean, was type this kind of?
You guys have public comment at some point?
Yeah, but this is.
Oh, yeah.
This is public hearing, yeah.
This is public hearing on this issue.
Okay.
So if, like, if you want to talk about something other than that, we can do it in public forum, which is right after this. I'll wait.
Okay, totally waiting.
Got it. Anyone else? Anyone on the Zoom call? Zoom side of this equation? Okay, hearing none, let's close the public hearing. And then it is an action item on our agenda a little further down the list. Item three, public forum. That didn't take long. Yes, please, Ted. And I think you know the drill, David address for the record?
Good morning, Ted Seuss, 72 Broad Street. I'm here to discuss something I think that you guys have been dealing with, part of this, which is the basketball courts at the police station. And I had a chance to talk with some people who are involved in that. And I know that there was a vote to fund the, whatever the new project is scheduled to go there, and so the town has approved the money for the project. I don't think the public was necessarily aware that, that part of that was the removal of, of the two basketball courts over there. There was a petition that has been presented for 1,500 people who signed it, like to keep the courts there. And I'm here today to see if it would be possible, from a point of view of decision making, whether or not we could actually let the town vote on whether we would keep the courts there or not. So it would be the will of the people and sort of take this board off the hook. It's not like you guys have to be bad guys either for and against, and I think that we make a lot of difficult decisions in town. And if you have the votes and you have the support, then we go with it. And if you don't, then people are willing to accept that, that it doesn't exist.
Ted, thank you for that creative, creative thinking.
And so my question is, if we were to move forward that process and looking at the town's charter, do you need a petition with 50 signatures to originate that? Or what would be the process to allow us to get to that next step?
Next step would be, I think the petition process calls can call for a town meeting. Not, again, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know specifically. It's my understanding that a town meeting can be called by petition and the, and the bar is not that high in terms of the number of signatures you need on it. However, for a referendum question, that would be the decision of the board, I think, relative to, and that would be, I think, an advisory question, the way they typically do, because it's a non-binding, traditionally they're non-binding, those kinds of advisory questions. Certainly, it's a conversation we can have with Attorney Barrett to see what's allowable and permissible. And certainly, we can talk about.
It seems premature, given that there is a group that's been assigned the task of looking at pros and cons of that. Yeah, yeah, but we're. I was just going to say the decision has not, at this point, been made. Their facts are being looked at and, you know, before, before going all the way down that road.
Right, I don't know whether you've heard enough, but putting together sort of a small task force of representatives from the respective departments, this board, Board of Finance, and then some members of the public, discuss the full, full range of options down there. And also, we are also intending to go back to the architects and urban planning specialists to determine if there's any other way to configure that complex to continue to accommodate the courts as well as the additional storage. So, but your, your point as to an advisory question, it's, it's well worth consideration.
All right, got it. And I, I think the importance of that is that even at the advisory level and whatever committee you put together, my concern is that the decisions like this frequently get made by people who are of our vintage, and we are all getting up there, and we will live with this maybe 10, 15, 20 years if we're lucky. But I think the people who are going to inherit the town and live here going forward should have the opportunity to weigh in and communicate to us at this point what kind of town they would like to have going forward. Thanks. All right, thanks.
Anyone else wish to address the board in public forum? Sure, run up to them. I think we already have your name and address on the record, so.
Thank you. I'm sorry if my, I turned my phone off, but I don't know how to turn my watch off. But that's what keeps happening. Just to continue from last time, did we find out what was, the storage was going to be used for? Because that was a question a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, we've got the police department. Chief here. I kind of, I know. Butch, I don't, I don't see anyone from the fire department, but Butch, I know you're there, could you for a moment just talk about the stuff that you guys are going to be utilizing the storage facility for?
Sure. So we have a number of vehicles that currently are stored outside. As you know, probably with your own vehicles, if we could keep them inside, you know, try to take the best care that we can of those vehicles outside, but if they're inside, obviously, less wear and tear on them from the weather and can certainly last longer. That includes our command post, it includes our pickup truck. We have a, we have a mobile signboard, you've probably seen that around town, posted that for a number of things, including graduation. We have hopefully a light tower trailer as well, motorcycle, a number of bicycles that, that would need to go in there. We also have a number of, we have a equipment that we use quite regularly that we have stored here in one of our Sally ports, which is not really the best place for that, because that Sally port is, should be used for other purposes. And down at Graves Avenue, we have a number of items, including all the, all of our road signs, our, the sawhorses that we use to close the roads. We have a number of our vehicles, people probably don't know this, but when, when we purchase a vehicle, patrol vehicle, we have to remove the rear seats from them and put a prisoner containment system in there. All of those seats for all of our vehicles have to, we have to store those somewhere. Those are down at Graves Avenue, because when those vehicles get to the end of their useful life, we have to replace those seats. So we have a number of items, and there are other things that we have, equipment, things that we have that would be in that, use that storage facility to store.
Thanks, Butch.
Butch, after the last meeting and you went through the list, I had asked you for a dollar amount, I don't remember it specifically, but I do remember it was in excess of a quarter of a million dollars for the police side, because we also have the fire needs.
Right, and the fire, the fire, they have a lot more equipment than, than we do, and I, I don't even want to start to list what they have, I'd be talking out of school. I just know the, the needs that we have and we, you know, those things certainly would benefit being out of the weather for us. And like I said, if we start to, we can use our, our other Sally port more appropriately, and certainly Graves Avenue is one of those places that may, or may not be around forever. So, you know, anticipating that, moving that equipment out of there as well. We also have a number of crates down there for, for our Mako. As you know, we have to, we have to maintain a certain number of animal crates for any catastrophic incident like a hurricane or something, if we have to move animals. So we have a large number of crates down there as well.
Chief, did, is it okay?
Yeah.
The, the point was made in, in the last meeting when, when yourself and, I guess, Assistant Chief Show were on the meeting explaining the needs here, how this situation evolved and that the discussion initially was about adding bays to the firehouse because of their needs of storage and that this situation evolved because of trying to find a better way to work together with the police department on the emergency services campus to combine the needs of your department and the fire department to, to best serve the entire community with all of the emergency services needs on this one campus.
That's correct, both, both the fire department and, and the police department have had in their capital, five-year capital plans for a number of years now, facilities. We, we were looking just for, to get our vehicles out of the weather under a carport type of a situation. The fire department did have extra bays, that would have been two separate and distinct projects, would have costed, you know, cost more financially to do those, those, those projects independently. And as we started getting closer to the time that we were going to present for the capital budget on that, it was discussed that by combining efforts, we could do one facility, take care of the needs of both agencies and also be more physically responsible by a cost savings on that.
And you would be able to meet the needs of both departments in, by combining your efforts into one mutually used facility, is that correct?
That's right, and we did look at, you know, other, other areas on the property. You know, I had offered up an area along the backside of our, our property as well initially. Unfortunately, with setbacks and the Mako being there and other things, it wasn't feasible. And I know that a number of sites have been looked at, and I don't know to what extent, but, you know, there is, there's only a limited area on the property that would, would facilitate a, a project like that.
Yes, hi, Chief, it's Sandy. I think when you gave us the list two weeks ago, it came to over $300,000, so yours of, of equipment. So you're saying that does not include the fire department equipment? So really, the, the amount, the value of the materials to be stored is not as much, is greater than $300,000?
Right, the, the list that I, that I gave is only for police department equipment, what we have currently on need to store in places other than outside or in facilities that may or may not be available in the future. So that's just our number, and that's, that's a conservative number. And I, I think I put on there that those are not replacement costs. Those are costs of those items when we purchased them, some of them are a number of years old. So replacement costs probably would probably jump that up probably closer to half a million dollars.
Just for the department.
If I can jump in, Matt? Chief, and, and there have been a number of suggestions, because everybody's looking for, you know, in good faith, looking for solutions to this situation, some suggestions about potentially keeping storage offsite such as Graves Avenue. So for starters, what's the matter with keeping things at Graves Avenue? And then what's the matter with another remote location, if anything?
Well, Graves Avenue is not, unfortunately, it's, it's not a, it's an older facility, there's really not a lot of space or, or good space there for the equipment that we're talking about. Like I said, we store now things in there that are smaller in size, we can't put vehicles in there and things like that. I know the fire department would have difficulty doing that as well. Offsite, one of, one of the things that we talked about was, right now, we have stuff offsite, so, you know, in, in, during catastrophic events, windstorms, snowstorms, we have to have a patrol officer come here, get the pickup truck, drive down to Graves Avenue, load it up, then take it out to a scene where we may have to close a road, you know, where there's a safety issue, wires down, trees down, water across the road, those types of things. If, you know, the plan would be with a facility onsite would be to have that pickup truck loaded and ready to go. So as soon as we have an issue, just pull that truck out of the, out of the garage with the signs and, and horses and everything else that we need, ready to go, much more efficient operation that way. And, you know, in talking with the fire department, that's the, the issue with them, they have stuff spread out across the town, and it would be more efficient to have it here where they could access it immediately and more effectively and efficiently respond to issues that they need to, rather than driving across town to get a piece of equipment and then going to whatever incident they have to deal with.
Butch, thanks for bringing that up. I think the, the, the fire department list, Mike show was finishing putting that together, I haven't received it yet, of course, I was out of the office the last couple of days last week. But nonetheless, I think the fire department was more concerned about the response times by having to go offsite to get a piece of equipment to respond to something. And that, that was, you know, particularly if there's a piece of gear that's currently being stored at one of the three volunteer firehouses, which here is being stored there, which is on the southern end of town, and then having to go downtown to get that equipment and then back up to, say, Route 80 or something, or somewhere north, even north of that, impacts their, their ability to respond.
Well, the other, the other point that Mike made about storage is they have things, they, they're storing things in the firehouse, you know, kitty corner back here and there and everything, just, you know, to, to make it work. And that's why this initially started with the need for them to build an additional bay to the firehouse. And like I pointed out at, at one of the meetings, I was on that original building committee, and part of the structural concept in placing it on the site was the ability to expand, okay? And obviously, it's gotten to, gotten to the point where they were prepared to put it on the, the capital plan, and that's where, you know, they tried to get creative with the police department and find something that would work for everybody in the community.
Just one, one comment to, to Butch's discussion about using Graves Avenue, that is not the highest and best use for that piece of property in this town. It's, quite honestly, we, we should do something significantly better with it than that. As I'm fond of saying, you know, it looks a little bit like my basement, some, some fashions we're storing stuff.
Go back, how many administrations? I mean, it's always been a list on land acquisition or land management or whatever committee that, there's got to be a better use for that property.
So to ask, to finally answer your first question, yes, you've heard from Butch what the needs are, I will forward along to you to make available to the public the list of items that the fire department wants to store there, so I'll make sure that that gets circulated.
One of the other, one of the other uses that we have, and I didn't mention it, and I just want to, because I think it's important as well, is we, you know, as we looked at this, we, we realized that we could also put in there a, an evidence storage or, or large evidence storage space, temporary, have like a chain curtain that we could put a car in there, secure it in there around the chain with the chain curtain, and be able to process vehicles inside. Most of our processing now occurs outside, and if we have to do it inside, we have to use our Sally port, which obviously if a vehicle's in there for a couple of days, it, it causes issues with, you know, moving prisoners in and out of the, the Sally port. But that would be another use aside from the storage, which would just be as, on an as-needed basis.
I, I just would like to clarify, Julie, for you and for anyone who might be watching, we keep referring to the Graves Avenue site, and some people might not know what we're talking about, but it's the street that is parallel to Park Street and the corner of Boston Street. It's a brick building, it's, it's not an eyesore, but it certainly, as Matt said, is totally underused and really was never in any town plan meant to turn out to be a quote-unquote temporary storage facility, which it has been now for about 30 years. So there is, you know, when we look at the greater management of the town, that is a piece of property that could be much more beneficial to the town as a whole, whether it becomes private or public, so.
Indoor basketball courts. Yeah, it's obviously really inefficient to go to Graves or Water Street, wherever, to get the equipment, so it makes no sense, whatever storage needs they have, some of the stuff is, need, they need accessible right away, it sounds like some of it is just parked there. So that's the kind of stuff, maybe it needs to divide up what they need right away and what they don't need right away, because maybe they don't need an 80 by 80 facility, and also how much is available, like on Hubbard and just around the corner. So that's part of the thing that the task force might look at. And so, let's see, storage, the animal shelter seems to be underutilized, only because we don't have a lot of, what I, I'm not sure, but there's only one animal in there now, and so it seems like maybe that could be used for something, and maybe the animal shelter go to a more remote location, since that's there, but that's part of the task force also. And the other, lastly, which might be part of the task force, there was damage to the basketball courts up at Bitner recently by the skateboarders. And.
Not aware of.
Yeah, I took pictures, because I saw them up there all the time because of pickleball, so, but there were graphics in the center, and you can see the marks, and plus, I saw the kids head for it, and I yelled at them, and I wasn't very nice, I could have been a little nicer, but I, I don't, wouldn't be able to identify them, that's the only thing, it was just my, I was steaming. But, so that's part of the reason that I personally don't think it's a good location for courts. So I don't want to take up any more of your time, but I'm glad you're going to do the task force, and do you have timeframe on when that might be?
It's evolving at this point.
It's evolving, okay.
We, we are, we have, do not have definitive plans in place yet for the fire, for the additional storage base, so we're not contracting anybody, so we've got some time on that.
If you want to see the pictures of the courts, I could send them to you, send me the picture.
Please do.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Either in the room or on the Zoom room?
Uh, yes, this is Richard Cordero, 111 Little Metal Road.
Yes, Richard.
I spoke last, I spoke last week to start off the meeting about the, the basketball course. I, I also like the second, you know, Ted's, Ted's, Ted's opinion of having a town, you know, put it out to a vote, I, I think that would be a very viable solution, it would make a lot of common sense across the board, you know. I also, you know, I started this meeting last week, and, you know, you asked for town people to be involved in the commission. I not only sent emails, other people sent emails asking for me to be put on the commission, and it was crickets. You know, I, I, you, you're asking for that, 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 that town support from towns people, but then you ignore it. I, I don't understand, considering, I was the first.
Mr. Cordero, Mr. Cordero, let me, let me take that. You are one of about 15 or 20 people that have offered their services to us at this point. I think, Mr. Cordero, Mr. Cordero, please. I think you just heard that we have not finalized or even started to identify the internal candidates. So you are one of those individuals whose name has been forwarded to me to, for consideration as we go forward. You will receive all due consideration as everyone else who has volunteered, as you have.
Okay, I, because, because my, my main concern about the commission was basically one of your board members' final comments of what they said was, eventually they're going to have to deal with it. That's, that wasn't very professional at the end of, at the end of that conversation that you guys were having on the basketball court. So, and that person was assigned to this commission. That bothers me. So that's what I have said, you know, I, I, I really, you know, I, obviously, this is, you know, a situation that everyone really cares about in this town. You know, we, we want to, you know, if you're going to make a commission, you know, I think the people that are, I guess, you know, that really care about the situation or really want to make a change, not just deal with it, really should be on that commission.
Thank you for your suggestion, Mr..
That's why, that, I mean, I, it's not, it's not something I'm making up, it's something, you know, I, I heard in the, in the, in the meeting at the end, and, you know, I couldn't make a comment at that point. So I, you know, that's, I'm, I'm not trying to cause trouble, I'm just trying to make sure that we take the big picture and try to figure out a situation that works for everybody in the best interest of the town and the kids in the future. That bothers me.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Cordero. Anybody else? Hearing none, let's move on. Item four, approve the minutes, March 7th, 2021, regular meeting is her motion.
So moved.
Second. Any comments, questions, changes, et cetera? I have none. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen Federicius?
Aye.
Thank you. Item five, Finance Director, Mary Jane Melvasi. Mary Jane, are you there?
I am, I have to apologize, I'm having a lot of trouble with my laptop this morning, so I'm on my iPhone, and I do not have access to Board Pack at the moment, but I do have printouts of, of most of my reports, so.
All right.
All right, so I'm going to start with revenues, I guess.
Thank you.
Revenues right now are at 98.3% compared to 98% two years ago, which is the year we are somewhat trying to compare ourselves to instead of last year. I don't really have too many things to say, I, I would rather entertain questions.
I think we've recently heard that Youth and Family Services is bursting at the seams relative to their caseload. They're already over a hundred percent. And what's the anticipation by the end of the year?
Well, it, it's, it's, it's hard to gauge depending on the, on their caseload. But, you know, we have four more months, so I would, you know, it, it could be a quarter, quarter more of that that they, to bring in. So we'll see.
Anyone else with questions on revenue? Just one last one for me. I know the balance of the state funding outside of the education cost sharing grant for the Board of Education is in other departmental. Are there any concerns around that?
No, other departmental is already brought in, is over their budget. And I do expect that to become even higher. We do have the pilot and the MRSA money yet to come in.
All right. No one else on revenue? We're good? Lou, you okay?
Yeah, all set, Matt.
Great. All right, Mary Jane, next.
Expenditures, similar story. We're, we're a little bit higher, sixty-eight point eight percent than we were the last two years. Again, I'll just mention capital is, is over because we have, first of all, four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of purchase orders outstanding. And some of those will be coming in from fund balance. The debt interest is over by twelve thousand and that purely and, and under budget on what we went out for debt in the current year.
Mary Jane, Public Works. You know, I know we had at least one storm early in March, but does this include all the overtime through February?
Yes, anything through the next to last week in February because we pay the week after.
Next to last. Anybody else? All right, anything on warrants? Medical monthly projection.
Well, Matt, that's one of the items I don't have printed. Could you?
Certainly. February's number on the claims was back down below what we have been projecting. It was nine seventeen. Administration, administrative costs were up to like two seventy. That's one of the, that's the second highest we've had this year. So we were at, and it drops it down to a projected surplus of about forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And then stop loss. We are, we've hit the, we are at twenty point eight percent covered by, of our costs have been covered by the ASL. We saw approximately thirty, three, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in new claims, but and only about thirty-five thousand of those were covered by the ASL stop loss.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What, what? Why does that, why would the administrative number vary that much in a month?
The administrative costs, some of them are billed to us on a quarterly basis. So the administrative costs can fluctuate.
Yeah, that's consistent with what happened a year ago in the February timeframe was three hundred and ninety thousand, which was the second highest month on admin costs last year as well. So.
Okay. And so that's for the third party administrator and then the consultant.
Well, we, we don't pay the consultant directly. Anthem does, but so that's, that's just for Anthem's cost, but it's probably built in there somewhere.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else on that? Anything else for Mary Jane? No? Thanks, Mary Jane. We'll see you tonight at the Board of Finance meeting.
All right. Well, I have three other things under my report.
True, I forgot. Yep, just on that agenda, you're right. Discuss and take possible action on the transfer from reserve for personnel to salary accounts as outlined by the finance director due to the settlement of contracts and recommended to the Board of Finance. MJ?
So as we, we did before with the G A contract and others, this is the finalization of the fire department contract negotiation and some other smaller contracts that we have. So we are looking to transfer those line items from reserve for personnel. The reserve personnel line will go into the negative, but we have about to, almost two hundred thousand dollars in reserve that will cover that overage if needed at year end.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the transfer of eighty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars from reserve for personnel into light, into light as detailed?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Sleckman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, item three is discuss and take possible action on bond resolutions as prepared by bond council. In addition, send various school improvement projects for bonding to the planning and zoning commission for mandatory referral pursuant to section eight dash twenty of the Connecticut general statutes. MJ?
Pretty self-explanatory. As you know, the Board of Ed put forth a, a bond authorization request that you see before you. And the other one is the ten million dollar bond for the land acquisition for open space and other uses. Shouldn't be any surprise to any of you.
Thank you, MJ. Any questions or comments, MJ? Let's take these separately as to the recommended appropriation of bonding expenditures for the schools, the amount of three million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Sleckman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Sandy?
Motion carries.
What?
Lou, did you have a follow-up comment or?
No, you're catching Sandy?
Yeah.
I'm here. She's here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm sitting in the wrong side of the table.
Oh, I see.
I mean, I'm sitting on the right side of the table.
Well, it's my right, you're left as you look at it.
I'm here.
That's right, Matt, exactly.
Yeah, there you go. All right. So the second question, which is the land acquisition bond of ten, authorization of up to ten million dollars for land acquisition for both class A, class A, class B and class C lands. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Sleckman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Those, any accusations, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, item four, consider take possible action on the resolution and notice of the annual town budget meeting and budget referendum. All right, is there a motion? On the resolution?
I'll move it.
Second.
All right, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Sleckman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we've got budget meeting and referendum, the referendum legal notice. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
And I'll second.
Sluggish group.
Let me try your minds. Sleckman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
And for the benefit of the public, can we state what the dates are?
Yes.
For this, yeah, it looks like it's April fifth at seven thirty P M for the annual town budget meeting and then April twelfth for the referendum vote.
Think the budget meeting is live at the Rex Center.
And the budget meeting will be in person at the Rex Center in a large room downstairs. Okay, item six, Board of Ed, Director of Operations, Cliff Gurnham, six dot one. Is discuss and take possible action on award of bid four dash twenty-one, twenty-two. The Abraham Baldwin Middle School Kitchen renovations, equipment phase one of two. Cliff?
Good morning and thanks for having me. So in preparation of the summer's large project up at Baldwin, where we're going to renovate the complete kitchen up there, we went to bid for the actual kitchen equipment for the serving line, mainly because the lead times are, you know, about six months, you know. So we went to bid, we had two companies that responded to the bid itself. The bids were reviewed by the Standing Building Committee and they recommend moving forward and awarding the complete bid to Warehouse Store Fixtures Company in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars. And this is coming out of a referendum from twenty fifteen, sixteen, which still has two hundred and sixty-three thousand in the balance.
Any questions?
I did have a question, Cliff. I see that you bid the different components individually, which I think is a great idea. One of the components was five thousand less for the company that had the higher bid overall. Can you purchase just that item from that bidder, save the five thousand?
We discussed that with the Standing Building Committee and they felt it was in the best interest to just go with a single provider. You know, that way we're just dealing with one vendor. That vendor is responsible for warranting everything. This is all like one large serving, you know, the pieces interact and, and end up being one long serving line. So they felt it was in the best interest to, of the town, just to stay with the one vendor.
Thank you. Nice, Cliff. Anything else? Is there a motion to be awarding of the contract to, I think it's Warehouse Store Fixtures Company for the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars for the Baldwin Middle School Kitchen Equipment Project?
So moved.
And a second.
Anything further? Let me try your minds. Sleckman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Those, same accusations, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Item seven, Police Chief Butch Hyatt, consider and take possible action to purchase a light tower from Millennium Products off the G S A contract. Butch, once again, please.
Morning again. Thank you for the time this morning. And this is a request, we, we were able to apply for and receive a grant through JAG Grant, Justice Assistance Grant for Violent Crime Prevention through the state. This item is a, an approved item for that grant. We've also applied for some training. It's a twenty thousand dollar grant that Guilford was eligible for. So this is just part of that grant is going for this light tower. And just some background on the light tower. We typically borrow the fire department's light tower. There, you'll see it many times, anything we're doing at night, such as the, the Christmas tree lighting, things like that downtown. Halloween, we use, we use their light tower. We also have to borrow it if we have a crime scene or an accident scene that we need lights at. Their light tower is over twenty years old and maybe approaching its useful lifetime. So this is an ability for us to, to get a light tower, which we can use. But it's also the good piece of this is that light tower now becomes a piece of equipment that's available not only to the fire department, but any other department in the town that may need it for a situation, just like we use our, our portable message board. As you know, we use that not only for police related messages, but we used it for, for the, for the, giving out the test kits, we use it for graduation, things like that. So this is on a G S A contract, which is, you know, the best price that we can get for that. And I think that it's, it's something that, like I said, not only benefit the police department, but any agency in the, in the town.
Thanks, Butch. Any questions?
Just wondering where it's going to be stored. I couldn't resist.
I know, and I, I, I thought about mentioning that, but wanted to leave it alone. But yes, it would be another one of those items that we would end up having to store outside unless we have a storage facility.
Thank you.
Thanks, Butch. Anything further? Is there a motion to approve the twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-one cents to Millennium Products for the light tower as described by Chief Hyatt?
So moved.
Second.
Further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Sleckman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Those, same accusations, hearing none, motion carries. Butch, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheba. See you later.
Yeah. Item eight, environmental planner, Kevin McGee. Morning, Kevin.
Morning.
Come on up. And item one is to consider take possible action to award Dudley Field Preserve Fields Agricultural License.
So we went up, the, these things are under a five-year license. The last one just expired for the Dudley Preserve and the end of December.
Let, let me just back up for those in the viewing audience. This is for hay of those fields. This is a license.
Correct. Correct. Yep. So the town of Guilford has civil properties in town where we have agricultural licenses for, we invite farmers to come in to take care of the land for us or raise animals on it. This is one located in the corner of County Road and West Street. There's two fields. There's one just under three acres and one under sixteen acres on the property there. So there's total about nineteen acres that's being covered underneath this license. This field was formally done by Potter Family Farm. They, we went out to RFP again for it since the, their license expired as a five-year period. They were the only person or entity that would to provide a proposal for this property. Their proposal came back at fifty dollars an acre to, to hay these fields, which is a little bit, or considerable less than before, but there's competition last time around, which pushed the price up there. The commission really just, who oversees this piece, just really wants to make sure these pieces of land are taken care of so they don't go into brushy situations like that. So the, we get a little bit of return for it, but the fields are maintained in a scenic pattern or view there. So Potter Family Farm, so, and this was reviewed by the commission at their sixteenth, May, March sixteenth walk meeting. Put out the agenda for them and they approved the recommendation to this board. That Potter Family Farm continued with this piece there. They had no issues with them. And they actually just walked that property that night when we took the vote there to verify the conditions of the property there. So.
Is this the property where we allow lacrosse to take?
Yeah, there is a small area which we do allow lacrosse and we updated this contract license, not contract, but license to allow them in a small portion and then that area before they start for the season, we're boarding that the licensee and the town meet together to define the location there.
Good. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that, continue to have access to that.
What do you mean by competitive? When you said that it got a little competitive, I mean.
The last time around, there was at least two farmers looking for that piece there, which both are really interested so that they went above the typical value for hay. They, I think a couple of years ago, the value was about seventy-five dollars an acre to hay and they were at a hundred and a hundred and ten dollars an acre. My understanding were fifty dollars an acre is about the market rate now for the, for the properties in the area.
I can understand the logic, but okay, the A is more valuable at this point.
Just for those who aren't familiar with it, are we paying them or are they paying us?
They're paying us. So this is something where we don't, the service that we get our fields cut and we get it cut with payment to us because they utilize the product for their, for their farms. Animals there, so they're.
This hay isn't cultivated. This is just natural. They're not fertilizing it or?
Yes, they are fertilizing it. Yep.
Oh, they are?
There is in the contract. These are, these are pieces of land which are not conservation land. So these pieces of land have a requirement where they have to meet.
So it's actually cultivated. Okay.
PH values.
I, I was thinking more of just, you know, keeping the brush town type situation. Okay.
Nope, they go in there, if there's weeds, like milkweed, which is great for the monarch butterfly, but it's bad for the animals. They have to go in and treat that so their animals, which eat, eat this, the hay, don't get sick from that plant being there and they're, need to make sure the edges are cut back properly. So they have pretty much control of the fields there as they would have their fields adjacent to their own properties.
Any further questions?
It's always complicated. I mean, It's always so complicated. I mean, you would think, you know, keeping weeds down and fields and straightforward. I remember I was about a little piece for the land trust and we got accused of creating predator paths because we would keep the brush down.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, Kevin, thank you. Is there a motion to award the contract? The amount of.
Nine thirty, nine thirty.
Nine hundred and thirty dollars. To the for the Potter Family Farm?
That's a yearly rate.
What's that?
That's a yearly rate.
That's a yearly rate, nine hundred and thirty dollars per year for a five-year period, correct? Yep, it's for a full five-year contract?
Full five-year contract. So they'll start, what's this assigned, and then this will end December twenty-two, so December twenty-seven. So actually, that you must get six seasons off the contract?
Right, and it goes to the Potter Family Farm. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
In a second.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Let me try mine, Suckman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, consider to take possible action on the ordinance amending the boundaries of Guilford's voting districts as a result of the earlier public hearing. Is there a motion to approve same as outlined and defined in the documentation that was provided to us by the assess the registrars offices? And I might just add that Attorney Barrett has been working with them to make sure they comply with all the state requirements relative to the posting, the maps, and and contiguous nature of the changes that are related to this. So Pete, I know you're there for a moment. Would you just give us the reassurance? Maybe you're not there, Pete.
He's coming.
Oh, there he is.
Hey.
Hey, come on in.
Good morning.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, just just we're going to vote on the ordinance change on the boundaries of the voting districts and just wanted to make sure that you have or confirm that you'll work with the registrars, you're comfortable with this app.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to, I was kind of hoping they'd be on here. I don't see them.
They are here. Right-hand corner. Gloria, Lisa?
Very good.
There you go.
Oh, great. All right. So what I wanted to point out that initially the descriptions that were provided had a little issue with them that we actually worked on over the weekend somewhat. The registrar has put in some time on it. The do you folks want to explain or you want me to try to do it?
We we can. Well, can you start?
Yeah, I'll I'll start. All right. So what had happened, I don't know if you can follow this, but there's a part of District Four that was south of Route eighty because of the state redistricting and the fact that we need to accommodate the state redistricting. That part of four, the registrar has determined that the best way to minimize the number of voters that would have to change districts would be to plug that into two, which was appropriate. However, doing that would have created two non-contiguous sections of District Two. So the the latest thing that just was added was kind of a bridge between those two parts of the district that borders along Route eighty. So it's it's gerrymandering in a way. But you've seen that in, you know, many state and federal district for other reasons sometimes. But here, that's the purpose of that. So what we're asking a vote on are the geographical districts as set forth by the registrars with this bridge. Okay, so the initial documentation that you received and that was posted, I believe, on the website, now being amended, did not have this, but this is what we're voting on, that you're voting on. And then what I'll do is, working with the registrars, they have created the actual description of of those districts and I'll I'll review that one more time with them. But that's what the ordinance will state.
Great. So the the requirement on contiguous, Pete, will just talk to that?
Well, it's, you know, that's that's something that's been a legal requirement, the federal and state level. We don't have a specific municipal provision that requires it, but I would not want to be the attorney defending a a non-contiguous voting district. So this is how every redistricting that I'm been familiar with is conducted is create strictly contiguous.
So what basically this is, is sort of like a handle on a pot. On this side, on this side, it's, you know, just along Route eighty and then it dips down significantly further on.
Correct. The the problem wasn't to extend it all the way along Route eighty. It was to figure out how to join them. So originally, this little part of, I think that was three, would go all the way up to Route eighty. And now we've just shaved a little bit of that off to keep it contiguous.
Whether you wanted to know, probably.
All right.
Well, I asked the question.
And it and it varies a little bit from what was originally posted. So that's why I think it was worth the description today.
Great, thanks. I see Kevin is standing around. I want to thank Kevin. Kevin, as our GIS expert, is working with Pete, Gloria, and Lisa to provide the maps that are that need to be filed, posted with this ordinance. So Kevin, thank you for that.
For municipal purposes, it doesn't make, is there ever a case where it matters where someone votes in that the outcome would be different? I mean, a vote is a vote. They're counted and they're added up.
Not for the town, in large measure, what this does obviously is the state districts. But I believe the Republican Town Committee designates their delegates to the state convention by district. So this impacts that as well. And that's one of the reasons why there's consideration for doing this now as opposed to wait till sometime in the summer or waiting, you know, further out. But that's why this was originally brought to our attention.
Okay, is there any reason why that last little piece, because it wasn't included in the the notice and so on, why that would make a difference to that one group?
No, it it really won't. And as Matt says, it could potentially with the town committees' selection of delegates.
Yes.
However, from what I understand from Gloria, the the number of of delegates has already been provided by their state central.
Apparently, both parties statewide have already given the towns the delegate selection.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's based on a total of that districts.
But could it potentially make a difference? Perhaps, that's why.
It only makes the difference between the ninety-eighth and the eighty-sixth in our town.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Anything further? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Some vote.
Second.
Further comments or questions? Hearing none. Let me try my mind, Suckman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Item ten, appointments and resignations, act on the resignation of Michael Mancini from the historic district commission. Is there a motion to accept with appreciation and regret?
I'm a.
Second.
Let me try your minds, fall in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mancini, for his service. Item eleven, request for use of town property. Act on a request from Guilford High School to use the green June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two for its graduation ceremony. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Certainly, second. Let me try my mind, Suckman Federici.
Aye. No.
Aye.
Aye.
Item two, this is to add, this, we need to add this to the agenda and as act on a request from the Temple Beth Thickeb to hold a vigil on the green in support of Ukraine on April third, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Some vote.
Second.
Try your mind, Suckman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Opposed, staying accused of hearing none, motion carries. Item three, this is another one to add to the agenda, which is a request from an individual. Good old Spinks to use the green for community gathering and fundraiser in support of the Ukraine refugees. This is on the agenda, though I think to Sue's point, at the last time we had one of these, this is an individual use as opposed to a nonprofit, which is in direct conflict with the rules of use for for the town of Green. I will argue the fact that Karen Kursia in talking with this individual indicated that she might want to partner with the the temple to do something in conjunction.
Yeah, same day.
Same day.
So, good.
So if there if there's not a motion to add it to the agenda, we'll move on to item twelve. Committee reports. Sandy?
Well, there was a Zoom presentation regarding affordable housing initiatives in Guilford and in Connecticut. In general, it's covered quite thoroughly in the Guilford Courier. That was not a result of our town committee housing economic development, but we get LinkedIn and in conjunction with our town planner, Jamie Stein, our small committee and others are going to try to also present a follow-up meeting in person in April. That was a lot, right?
Yeah, it just will be.
But we're just one little cog in this.
Yeah, yeah. What I wanted to do was talk about the council government's is putting together a regional housing plan. I think we talked about this in the past, as opposed to having, you know, the thirteenth or fifteenth separate communities in the council government, South Central Regional Council, decided to put to to utilize the services of a professional consultant. David Fink was done that. So this first phase was to talk about the the needs, the goals and needs of for affordable housing in a community like Guilford. This next phase, which is going to be fully open to the public again, will be the strategies that are going to be put in place as part of this how this affordable housing plan, which, by the way, you guys have heard this has to be filed with the state by the end of June of this year. So that was one of the, you know, was the introductory phase to get some kind of consensus on the goals. The second piece, which will be a little bit later in April, will be the strategies that we are going to include in the document. I bet I spent about an hour and a half, two hours with Jamie Stein last week to talk about the strategies. The consultant had provided us with literally eleven pages of strategies that we might want to entertain. The good news is we have either completed or in the process of doing many of those types of things. For instance, the the tax abatement for affordable housing just passed. That's clearly the fact that we have a standing committee on affordable housing. You know, these are all components of that plan and stuff where hopefully we're going to be in pretty good shape.
And as a little addendum, I've been contacted by Julie Cat, member of the Sustainable Guilford Sustainable Guilford Task Force, as that group works very hard to maintain our silver and work towards gold. And there's a lot of part of the criteria for that is is meeting affordable housing initiatives as well. So there's a lot going on. And Matt and I were on a Zoom call with Sean Scanlon as part of the Human Services Legislative Update. And we mentioned to him about possible help from him and our rest of our legislative colleagues in Guilford to perhaps move the funding along for the Woodruff property, which seems to have, I don't want to use the word stalled, but it it needs funding from the DOH to go on to the next step. So and I had some thoughts about that that we can talk about later. So there's a lot of things going on.
All right, anything on the new business? Okay. Here we go. All right, we have one that will require an executive session, so in the forum. Anyone want to address the board in public forum prior to when we get to executive session?
Nobody from the public yet. No one from the public at this point. I I my other hat on or maybe not. I do want to comment in in public forum because as somebody who 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 served on, you know, the planning process, the only purchasing that that property for the emergency services campus and consolidating all the fire department and emergency services and also even on the building of those buildings. I I just want to point out that I, you know, really was making my comments trying to give a historical perspective. And just as we commented last time about some of the personal attacks and some of the communications and letters regarding this issue, I don't want to, this isn't, you know, about any one person or anything like that. And I don't want to appear as an easy target or a lightning rod in any of these issues. I just want to bring a historical perspective of how we got where we are. So that, you know, to that point of I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I've already pointed out to you, Matt, that I would just as soon not serve on that task force just so that, you know, I just don't want to serve as an easy target. We've already seen it start. We've seen it in the letters. And this is not about personal. This is about doing what's best for for all of the citizens of Guilford, you know, including the basketball players, so.
Great, thanks, Charlie. Just want to support Charlie Havert's point. And I think that just reemphasizes the need for the community to vote on the issue so that it takes it off any one person. And we, there are going to be people, no matter what gets decided to happen on a piece of property, who are not going to happy. And and I think process is important. I think people need to feel like they've really had the opportunity to weigh in. And I think we should allow the community to vote. Enough people in the community have already demonstrated that they care about the issue. And I think that we, as a community, owe it to let everybody's voice be heard. Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? I don't think we have any. We have one person from the public page. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion going to executive session.
Some vote.
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, fall in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We have, Lou, you still there? Good.
Aye.
And I'm going to invite Mr. Shea, Mark Shea, to participate in the executive session. So we'll be back in a in a bit. We ready? Okay. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Some vote.
In a second.
Second.
Let me try your mind, Suckman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
We had one item that we discussed in executive session. There were no motions made. There were no actions taken. And since we've already had public forum, I think we're at a point where I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some votes.
Second.
Let me try your mind, Suckman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Opposed, staying recused, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for.
Now get back to work. What's that?
I said, thanks for the consideration.